Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, June 30th, 2021. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. Meetings can now be viewed live on the City Channel and live streamed on YouTube. Our first order of business is public comment. Now we'd like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. When you are announced, please provide your name and neighborhood for the record, and you will be given three minutes to speak. Our speaker for today is Ikuhana Hal Makina.
Greetings of peace, light, and love. My title is Ikuhana Hal Makina. I am the Grand Inca of the Aroqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American people. My land is situated in what is known to most people in the city of Pittsburgh as Stanton Heights. I would like to thank in advance City Council for listening to us day in and day out as we come onto the line and speak about the Aboriginal American people of the land. It is of vital importance that the Aboriginal American voice is heard throughout the land, throughout the nation. Because it is our ancestors, whose land we stand upon, whose shoulders we stand upon, great matriarchs, the great warrior men who fought long and hard to defend our land from foreign invasion. I will not be before you very long today as I am out in the garden, laboring in love, if you will, alongside a few of my comrades who peel the land. And so I just wanted to give thanks to City Council, thanks to William Pudido. We had a very successful meeting with Bill Pudido yesterday, and great things are in the works to give honor, respect, and reverence to the Aboriginal American people who are currently situated in this territory known today as Pittsburgh. Once again, I thank you for your consideration. I also thank you for your time, and I just ask that your hearts still be mindful of whose land this is and it's only right that honor and the preservation and the sacredness of our land be given stewardship to the Aboriginal American people of the land. And once again, I thank you again for hearing our voices, for hearing our pleas and petitions before City Council on an almost weekly basis. I know you all so missed me last week. I was out traveling upon the land, and I just want to again thank you. And I yield the rest of my time. May your day be filled with peace.
Thank you very much. That takes us to our Standing Committee's agenda. Where do clerk please hit the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Laval, Chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law chaired by myself. First, one supplemental paper, Bill 1656.
Bill 1656, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into An Agreement with Mar Duzel for Services Related to the Administration of the City's American Rescue Plan Act, Funding at a Cost Not To Exceed $200,000.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
Mr. Chair, may I? Do we have someone here then from the Office of Management and Budget this morning?
We have Director Paulus and Mr. Cornell with us, I believe.
Good morning, Director. Would you like to join us?
Morning, Councilmembers.
Morning. Thank you. Could you give the Council a briefing on this agreement we plan to strike with Mar Duzel for the distribution of the American Rescue Plan monies?
Sure. Good morning, everyone. I'm joined by Assistant Director Patrick Cornell of the Operating Budget. This piece of legislation is to contract for consulting, compliance, and reporting services as it relates to the proposed ARC plan. This is something that the county did for their CARES funding and are planning to do for ARC funding as well. There are multiple report requirements per the federal government in the guidelines for the ARC funds. Essentially, the city is going to be responsible for six different reports, an annual financial report, an annual performance report, and four quarterly financial reports. So this is going to be a heavy lift and involves a lot of funding with a lot of different stakeholders and different programs. And this contract and these services would help with that lift. I discussed this briefly with Council Budget Director Urbank as well when we first perceived the guidelines, and he was supportive of it. Meyer specifically has worked closely with the National League of Cities on the ARC guidance interpretation as they've rolled out the frequently asked questions in very lengthy language for all of that compliance. So they are a key stakeholder in this and in the ARC plan to determine the eligibility of the programs listed in the proposed plan that is proposed by the Pittsburgh Joint Committee.
So I'm sure every member is in agreement that there has to be a clear understanding and reconciliation of the allocation, distribution of the funds. I don't mean to speak for all members, but I think the questions members had yesterday were more around how we struck the contract with Mar Duzel. Is it because we have an existing contract with them and we've piggybacked on top of it for them to do this work as well?
No, this would be a separate contract with a separate scope of services and a separate team within Meyer. This is totally separate from the contract that we have existing that lives in the Department of Finance for auditing and accounting services.
Okay, so once again, I don't mean to speak for all members. I think the questions in yesterday were more around how was the contract then awarded? Because there had been questions previously on the awarding of contracts to Mar Duzel and and other firms wishing to have participated in an RFP process. Can you explain to us how that process came to be?
Sure. We explored the emergency waiver due to the sensitivity of the ARC plan and the guidance that is such an immediate need to determine the eligibility of the programs that are proposed in the ARC plan as well. So without their initial guidance, without this contract, that delays the process of us rolling out the ARC plan because there is a lot of due diligence on the front end that we need to do to work into the program details to make sure that we comply with all of the guidelines set forth by the federal government.
Okay, so then Director, if I understand your explanation correctly, because of the emergency waiver in existence, we're not obligated to RFP, I hope I'm not oversimplifying, but that we're going out and contracting with Mar Duzel because of past experience that we've had, capacity and competency that they have in these matters that they've shown with existing contracts we have and their expertise and capacity with other cities in managing these American Rescue Plan dollars. Do I have that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you being here. That's all the questions I have for right now. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other members?
Reverend Burgess. Here. Kevin, I really don't want to talk about the contracts. I'm supportive of the contracts, but I do want to, we will have a very wholesome, extended conversation recovery funds. The only thing that I think I would like for us to even from the very first time having this conversation is to be very clear to the public that these dollars are not all discretionary dollars. That is, there is really, really, I think the public and some of our public comment pointed to that, that their belief that this money was all discretionary money that could be spent on discretionary projects in the city. And that that's actually not true, that the amount of actual discretionary funds is actually very limited, but that these funds have been narrowly designed specifically for COVID relief, specifically really to keep us from firing employees. So if you talk just in general about the limitations of these funds so that as we start to get public comment, people understand from the beginning, this is not a slush fund of dollars that can just be spent on pet projects.
Yeah, sure. That's a great point, Councilman, and you're correct. The bulk of these funds are to put back in the vacant positions that we removed, remove the anticipated workforce reduction and re-implement some of the non-personnel things that were removed just in order to pass a 2021 budget document. Within the ARC guidelines, there are different categories of which funds qualify for. And so their consult, Myers' consultation services is going to be critical in making sure that we comply with those categories. Because you're right, the bulk of these funds are to put back the fixed costs that we removed or delayed within our own budget, city budget to bring back service levels. Patrick, do you have anything to add to that?
Sure, thanks. Hi, Patrick Cornell, Assistant Director of the Operating Budget in OMB. So generally, there are several main categories as set out in the American Rescue Plan. One is lost revenue, and that has a very specifically defined federal formula as to what that calculation is. It's based on, it'll be our 2019 actuals in comparison with where we are at four different points during this process of the end of 2020, the end of 2021, '22, and '23. So as we will get into later in this process, we'll have to do adjustments based on what those numbers actual are. Those are the most flexible funds, but like Director Paulus alluded to, those are the ones that we will need to use to restore a lot of our budget line items. Other categories include negative economic impact related to COVID-19, water infrastructure, technology infrastructure specifically for broadband. The Treasury issued new guidance last week, or two weeks ago rather, indicating that community, public safety, and public health are new categories. And all of these things have very strict requirements as to what we need to show to prove that they fall into these buckets of funding. So if you have something that's negative economic impact related to COVID, we have to actually show with data and numbers how someone or some program took a hit because of COVID-19 and the economic impact it had from there. So it's not going to be easy, and our expertise in some of these rules is limited, and so that's one of the reasons we're looking for independent third-party assistance.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to be, we've heard from the comment, I've actually gotten calls and people you know, come up with their own plan of how these dollars can be spent. And I welcome, and we're going to have, I think, fairly robust public participation. But I wanted to at least sort of maybe even preempt some of the comments from the public asking us to put these dollars in places that we actually can't. These are, these monies, the vast majority of these dollars are streamlined and are going to be used for very specific things. And that's all. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Any other members? Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize to members for fighting with my computer this morning, being a little late to the table. I am specifically wanting to ask again, I see notes from my staff who were filling me in that you said the Mar Duzel contract was already awarded? Or was awarded under emergency powers? Director Paulus, do you mind repeating that for me?
Yeah, it was not awarded. We're seeking authorization to award. But the premise of why we forward the RFP process was under the emergency procurement waiver due to the sensitivity and the eligibility determination that is needed for the ARC for the ARC guidelines and the programs that the Joint Task Force has proposed to council.
So for the record, Mar Duzel handles already for us the city audit, correct?
Yeah, they perform auditing and accounting services, which is a contract held with.
City have contracts with already?
Yeah, yes.
Right. Do the Urban Redevelopment Authority?
I believe so, yes.
The Water and Sewer Authority?
Not entirely sure on that, but possibly, yes.
Councilwoman Strasburg, do you know who the auditor is? I believe it was Mar Duzel for years there as well. And so here, I think my notes say that you're saying you're, they're not only going to do auditing, they're going to help you structure upfront your reporting requirements to the federal government.
Yes, the services are going to be consultation services.
And so you need them because they handle other cities' American Rescue Plan funds? Or they're advising other cities? How are they experts in the American Rescue Plan?
So they've worked closely thus far with the National League of Cities to comb through the guidelines. And like Assistant Director Cornell alluded to, the original guidelines came out a couple months ago. There was a 60-day comment period. So now that that 60-day comment period is over, the federal government is making slight revisions to those guidelines, those frequently asked questions, implementing new measures, removing maybe some restrictive measures. So they're helping us stay on top of the interpretation of the wording that's in the bill set forth by the federal government.
I'm just going to tell you what I've got in front of me, which is to, as Councilman Burgess said, support urgent COVID-19 response efforts. Right? That's the first bullet point on the Treasury website. Replace lost revenue, as he also mentioned, for eligible state territories and local governments like we are for public services and help retain jobs. That's really your top line in your spreadsheet, right? That's like $20 million that we didn't have in revenue last year. And so we don't want to fire half of the city workforce tomorrow? It's March, July 1st?
Tomorrow, yes.
So is this actually a little late in the day? How are we not firing half the city workforce on July 1st? And when we're just having this today?
So that's what the proposed ARC plan that we have in front of you that we sent over for.
Seems like it's a few days late, though.
No, we have enough reserves in the account to not fire and not have to lay off and explore those anticipated workforce reductions that we originally worked in. And so that's part of the larger ARC plan would be to add in funding to the the operating budget to mitigate those efforts so that we don't have to explore that.
Right, so that is workforce stabilization. We definitely do not want to have to have the layoffs on July 1st. I'm addressing public health and economic challenges, so that's about what's happening out in our constituents and how they're suffering. So behavioral health care, other kind of public health issues, we see some of that in your spreadsheet. Counteracting negative harms to households. So direct support to households, to small businesses, any industries that were especially negatively impacted in the city of Pittsburgh, those are eligible funds. Certainly premium pay for any essential workers. And then this kind of like, you know, so what I'm thinking of is industries we know that were really hard-hit in the city of Pittsburgh, where of course our small businesses, our restaurants are kind of recovering. Not every restaurant, but local data shows that there's been a lot of recovery. But certainly, we have people trying to, that have a gap in funds basically to try to go from their kind of like very, very small takeout level staff to how do they ramp back up to in-house serving? So we still do see some capital needs in the restaurant industry. I know that the RRA is working on some of that. One of the things I don't see in your plan, I know this is off-topic and we're going to talk more about it in post-agenda and public hearings, but I just wanted to address this since you said Mark Diesel is kind of helping you align the regulatory requirements with our dollars. And I'm wondering how, what I see as a mismatch that we we know we still have food scarcity in the city. We know people are still looking for support for meals. We've ramped up our own meal distribution. We know we still have mutual aid networks on the ground, and I don't see anything here. That was one of the things that Councilmember Burgess, I think, mentioned we've seen in public comment. And there have been coalitions concerned about this gap, why there's nothing there. And I believe that is not a regulatory barrier. And then also, we have some really critical small business sectors that have been damaged that are negatively impacting our households, specifically childcare. We saw a big press release yesterday about pots of money that have been around for a very long time that are finally going to move, which I'm relieved to see, and I hope that they're effective. But I believe that we should have some placeholders here because, as we know, this is not just like a one-month job. These funds are in place for 40 months, nearly four years, for a good reason, which is that we have, it's going to take a while to recover. And we don't know what impacts are going to be coming in the next three years. We hope we're near the end of this global pandemic, but we don't control that. We don't know that that's true, or whether we, like other countries, may go back into another lockdown, what the negative impacts on our households, on our food access, on childcare access, and just on our families in the city of Pittsburgh are going to be. So I just wanted to make sure that I got that off my chest. And I understand that that is, I think, relative to and relevant to what advice we're getting from Mar Duzel. And I still kind of want to give you a chance to answer my question from yesterday, which was, if you did a no-bid contract here and just went with a firm that you have a long working relationship with, why did we have to relay this and not wait a week?
Sure. The reason we requested relay was to get the authorization as soon as possible to get the contract in place so that we could determine the eligibility for these programs. And like I said at the beginning to Councilman Kraus, we do have a current contract with them, but it is involving an entirely different team with an entirely different department for a different scope of services. So this would be its own standalone contract with a separate team within Meyer Duzel that are key stakeholders and subject matter experts as it relates to the ARC guidelines.
But we needed it this week and not next week?
Yes, to begin the contracting process to determine the eligibility for the programs.
So basically, the spreadsheet in front of us has not been analyzed by anyone?
No, we've had, we have begun to develop program descriptions. It is the legwork now that deals with ironing out all of the finer details within those programs to ensure that they fall within the guidelines and compliance by the federal government to make sure that in four years, when we go back and are audited by the federal government, that we don't have to repay funds.
So how long is it going to take them to complete that work?
It really depends on the programs, but they have the team in place. We've had initial conversations with them. We have all of the framework to get up and running as soon as we get the authorization hopefully from you all and the contract in place.
So there could be revisions to the sheet that you put in front of us?
Possibly, yes.
I see. So you kind of put your version out in front, but now they have to connect all the dots and make sure all the dots connect?
Sure, and the other half is making sure that the programs align, right? So we can implement a new program, but the devil's really in the details. So that's where their consultation and subject matter experts really help us.
Okay, that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Any other members?
Mr. Chair, second round, if there's no other member.
Any other members? First round, seeing none. Second round, Councilman Kraus. Any Burgess? Sorry.
That's okay. When my children were younger, we made a decision to send our children to private school. That decision and decided not to move out of the city, you know, the choice was we were not pleased or satisfied with public schools and particularly their interaction with black men, black males. We wanted a certain level of education that we thought could not be provided in the city schools. And so we made a decision to either, we had to either move from the city or put our children in private school. Also, I believe very much in Christian education, so that's the other thing. So we decided to put our children in schools that were religiously affiliated and were high-functioning children, schools. That was expensive. And so unfortunately, I mean, fortunately, I don't know. Unfortunately, it's not the right word, but that was, it became the primary part of our budget. You know, every time I sat down, I had to think before, you know, even if my kids needed new clothes, if I needed a new car, if I needed, you know, whatever the other expenses were, that tuition had to become primary, and I had to pay it first. And the reason I paid the tuition first, even though they had other needs, was I believed that by paying this tuition, it would be transformational in their life. And, you know, they wanted to go on trips like the other children. They wanted to go to Disney. They wanted, or they wanted things that they needed or wanted, you know? They wanted the latest fashion or other things, you know? They could not get those things because tuition was the primary responsibility of our budget. Because I believe by investing in their education, you know, it would be transformational in their life. And it worked out. I'm blessed. They're very high-functioning children, you know, all graduates, three in graduate school, and I'm blessed by that. It paid off. Well, I'm a pastor and love people. But now we're going to be in that same condition in terms of this money, these dollars. There's going to be a tendency, I know that, I've heard it, to want to spend the money on human services or spend the money to give away to whoever our friends are, whatever businesses that we have relationships with, primarily not African-American probably. But we will, that will be, that will be, that will be a response. That was the conversation. But I will resist that urge. This, whatever discretionary dollars are left over are a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Now, beside the fact that research and best practices agree with me, I know that because I've read them. I'm going to argue as vigorously as I can that we use these money for no short-term use, not to pay rent or to help someone out of a problem they have this year, but similar to what I did with tuition, but to make investments that create long-term transformational change in people, specifically the African-American community. I will defend the equity dollars that we are putting in from COVID relief into black communities. I know there will be a tendency by some members of council, maybe not, to want to redirect those funds to non-African-American and non-people-of-color purposes. I will defend it, and in purposes that are not transformational. I have been preaching for 30, 40 years. I've been pastoring 37 years. I've been doing food for 40 years, giving away food. I have given the food away, and every month it's the same people. It has been the same people. It has not changed. Even though we gave food distribution, it did not change their life. Important to give them food. I've done dinners, hot food, all that stuff. I don't even talk about it on council. I don't advertise it. We just do it. It's right to do. But this moment, we have an opportunity to change generational outcomes for people's children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren. We have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We have a once in a lifetime opportunity to not give them fish, but actually teach them how to fish, that put them in good homes, that would change their whole life, just like in tuition. That should be the priority, at least, that was, that's gonna be, I think you're gonna hear the thinking of those of us who helped author this and created this. It's according to best practices. Um, it is according to what's best for the people. And again, we'll get into this at length, but I'm laying my mark, you know, I'm gonna lay my marker down right now. The two things I will argue on, one is specifically, any deviation of these funds, I'm gonna wanna know how it helps black people. Because if it's not helping black people, I'm not gonna support it. Number two, I want to see how it's transformational, not transactional. That is the problem I have found. Um, uh, unfortunately, there is this need to want to do transactions. I guess I'm, yeah, and I'm I'm really looking for transformational change. And I'm gonna work with all my colleagues. I'll explain and want to meet with you to tell you at least what my perspective was on this, what my, why would I chose, what I tried to advocate for, and on why um I agree with whatever is in the um in the proposal, and hope that over time, um, my arguments can be persuaded persuasive. But we have a long time. I'm gonna have a few weeks to have this conversation. And I'll just lay my markers down so that they're public, so that when I, you know, when I respond going forward, everyone knows my perspective. And I will not talk after this about this. Let's get more Duzel online. Let's get the technical expertise we need, and let's go in and do what's best for the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Any other members? Second round. Council President Smith. You're muted, Council President.
Thank you. I said, I feel like we're sitting here debating this already, and we haven't even begun um having our public hearings and public meetings. Uh, but I do want to just say, uh, thank you, Kevin, uh, Director Pauli, I apologize for um talking with me yesterday and and going over the concerns that Councilwoman Gross and I raised yesterday. Um, I do feel a little bit better today. I never felt good with contracts, I'm gonna be honest, but I do feel better um having heard from you and knowing how how good you are um and sincere and honest. Um, so I'll just thank you for taking that time uh to explain to me. I do feel better now. I'm going to vote in favor of it today. Um, but I do think we're going to have a long conversation about this funding, and I think that we need to keep sight and focus on the people of Pittsburgh in general. And I think that that's a conversation we're all going to have. There's a lot of people hurting, and they just want us to get this funds and help to them as soon as possible. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I I do also just want to say that, of course, this is a public conversation. We will make sure that we have public process. This was the recommendations from the task force to council, and there's been, I think, a lot of concern from the public that this was the final list, and it is not. Um, that we have the post agenda that Madam President has scheduled coming up on July sixth. I believe I saw it in my email. Um, there will be a public hearing. Is it the same day, I believe, Madam President, on the evening, which is Tuesday after July fourth?
So I actually gave two dates to Madam Clerk. I'm sorry, do you mind, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Okay, I just gave two dates to Madam Clerk. She's gonna check and verify those dates. Um, but they are a Saturday, I I think it's the tenth and Monday, the twelfth. Saturday, the tenth in the morning uh for a public hearing, uh, ten and uh Monday, the twelfth in the evening at six. So we give uh the public two different opportunities to speak um to the to the budget.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, yeah, I really, I think that's going to help people. We all need time to digest this. I myself only saw it um just, or was it Monday when it came out as a new paper? Um, so, you know, we're, I'm still looking at it and trying to understand what the the different lines are um in the proposal. Um, and I think members of the public are also trying to understand what are these allocations? Why are some of them in the first year? Why are some of them in later years? Are these, as Councilman Burgess says, are these transactional? Um, do they meet the needs? Um, what are other cities doing um to meet this their citizens' needs? And are we kind of interpreting, you know, how do we interpret these regulations? All of that stuff, I think, is part of what we look forward to in the coming weeks around this conversation. So appreciate it. That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any last comments for second round? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended.
Aye, Director.
That takes us to our deferred paper, Bill fifteen eighty-eight.
Bill fifteen eighty-eight resolution transferring a total of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars within the twenty twenty-one operating budget from the Department of Public Works to the Department of Parks and Recreation for the purpose of increasing pay for lifeguards in reopening as many pools as possible for the twenty twenty-one season.
Uh, Madam President?
This for the lifeguards?
Yes, most to prove a discussion. Madam President, I'll let you speak last. I spoke last week, so you can give the update this week.
Yes, no, you can speak. I mean, this is your legislation.
But we we were just in our meeting yesterday, so why don't you go ahead?
Okay, so I will just say that we've been meeting with people, and I do want to um thank um Councilwoman Gross, first of all, for for um meeting with us. I want to thank Chief of Staff Gilman, uh, Chief Casey, but I, you never hear me say this, but I want to thank um the Pittsburgh Foundation, because they have been at every meeting. Uh, Philip Philip has been at every meeting um helping us try to figure out this. But the last update we had uh as of yesterday was we are waiting uh to hear back from Pittsburgh Public Schools and the superintendent's out of town this week, I believe. Uh, or was he was at least when I spoke with him that day. So uh we'll wait for his return and have a conversation with him next week. But over the weekend, I had spoken with uh or during the week, I spoke with Jimmy Williams from Pitt and asked if the universities would be willing to have their pools open um to let the public swim like they used to back in the day. We used to swim up trees, trees hall. Um, and if they're not willing, would they look at their pool of, as if they don't want to open a pool, they certainly have a pool of people that they can pull from and um maybe have some lifeguards in there that they can help us. I'm certainly certain that they're connected to some lifeguards. And maybe they could help us get some of those people or some of the staff, maybe if it's giving extra credit to somebody or doing something to ins- incentivize people coming to work for the city to get at least a few more of our pools open if they're not willing to open their pools or unable to open their pools. And so we'll know more from him this weekend. But I do want to say that it's been a a struggle because, you know, we have such a litigious society. I think people are just afraid to open up to the public anymore, and what a sad statement that is. Um, but we all agree that we do not want our kids on the street. And I do want to say the Heinz endowments was at the first meeting as well. And we'll have to get them on some of the follow up meetings, but if they're, and and the Port Authority has been at the meetings too. So I think if there's a way we can get pools open, people are willing to um transport people to pools. So it's it's getting all those things in place, but it's first we have to get, find out where we need to get, transport people. But Councilwoman Gross, I think that was it, and I think Chief Casey is following up on several things, and um Chief Gilman actually spoke with the Y and other people as well. So they are, people are making phone calls and trying to see what we can do, even think of alternative ways just to make sure we're opening cooling centers, making sure we're opening um places where people can go and cool off, sprinkler, um additional water features, whatever it is we can do to be creative to get people to cool off, especially in these brutal temperatures.
After yesterday's meeting, yeah, thank you. After yesterday's meeting, I spent like an hour looking last night in the evening at what other cities are doing on with their fire hydrants, right? So we tried, we tried, we've tried now for two weeks to get another pool added or access to their pool. So far, we have not. But this idea that other cities actually allow citizens to borrow a sprinkler head, the fire um department comes out to their fire hydrant, and there's a special head that they put on it, so it's not full force, that's a sprinkler head. And I've found, I don't know if it's still current ordinance, but in like New York, if you're over eighteen, you go to your local fire department, you just say, go to the one near your house, and you sign out a permit for a sprinkler head, and the firefighter will come to your fire hydrant near your house and add the sprinkler head that can be turned on or off. Um, and so it lowers the amount of water, you know, we don't want water pressure to drop for public safety. There has to be water pressure in the system for fire hydrants to function in case of emergency. So this is incredibly low flow. It's a, it's a great sprinkler, but it's much lower flow than a fire hose, right? Uh, and then you've got access to it, and we combine with like a block party, you've got an instant water feature on your street. It's not the same as a pool. It's not the same as pool, and we're still heartbroken and not giving up yet on trying to gain yeah, access to some pools in the city. Uh, we have failed on many fronts so far in the last two weeks. Um, but we're still holding out some hope for that, hope for recruiting. If we can refine, you know, a magic source of lifeguards, um, we we do have the commitment from Chief Casey to opening at least one more pool, if not several pools, right? If that could magically happen, if anybody has some, a lifeguard uh team that they can just, you know, bring enough to open another pool, we can do that. I'm still at this stage in the season. Um, but if not, I'm, I've got some uh messages out to firefighters today to see if we can at least. I don't think, I don't know if we have these sprinkler heads in Pittsburgh, and if not, uh, maybe we should get some.
We did talk about it yesterday. I that that's how we used to cool off. They used to give us sprinkler heads in the key. And I said, could we do that? But the chief said, now with the water.
Understood the sprinkler head thing, because you don't have significant water house, yeah, just sprinkler. If you open a fire hydrant full of force, you're gonna lose, you're gonna spend too much money on water, and you're gonna lose too much water. But so this is, this is something different, so I'm gonna see what I can find out. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. I'm just thinking out loud here, but I know that P W S A has to drain some of the fire hydrants to descale. It's like sort of a descaling, keeping the water moving and it's ability to descale the pipes there, the lines.
Yeah, those aren't exactly like, they don't spray out and I sprinkler.
So if we just invested in that.
After the meeting.
Yeah, if we could somehow invest in those, if they were not expensive and invest in those sprinkler heads and then coordinate the timing so it's fun kids, you know, and just put a little like, where's the food truck app? Like, where's the, you know, where's the sprinkler gonna be today?
That'd be great.
Um, on hot days. I happened to take my son yesterday. She's suddenly, I have never seen him this year. Kudos to those lifeguards. They were amazing for people and for people. So lifeguards, we do have a work. I'll do what I can to try to, you know, keep our workforce here and um and get some of your lifeguards on staff.
Thank you. Councilman Cargill?
Yes, uh, I first want to start by thanking um Madam President and Councilwoman Gross for, you know, taking this up and finding the funds to at least keep to to hire the lifeguards in order to keep the pools that we do have open, open. I think it's such an important thing, not only because of the heat socially for kids, adults. I mean, everybody loves a pool, at least in my district. So I want to thank you for your efforts on that. Um, I will say, you know, two of my biggest neighborhoods, Brookline and Beachview, probably a combined over thirty thousand people that live in these two neighborhoods are without a pool. Um, you know, they shut down a pool, two pools. We actually had three in those two neighborhoods, and we're down to one. The one that we do have is more pool. And I'm very grateful it's under, you know, construction. It's actually being completely rehabbed. It's gonna cost up up there around about a million dollars in the end, um worth every penny, I would say. Um, which brings me to my point, you know, um, I was talking to acting director Hornstein last week, and and Deb, you and I talked on this, uh, touched on this a little bit. But um we really need an assessment for all of our pools. Um, I think moving forward, I'd hate to see us close any more pools in the city of Pittsburgh. I think they're vital to lots of things. As it stands right now, uh, you know, more more swimming, more pool was losing more water than, it was almost like we were constantly filling it up. Of of the pools that we have open, we fill them on an average of two and a half times per month, uh, which is ludicrous. Most cities and most pools, you fill once per season. So just throw the figures out at you, more pool will pay for itself in four or five years with the water that we're losing. So so, you know, um, but not to mention, you know, the amenities we're gonna put around it, benching, seating. You know, we're gonna make it really a first class, beautiful pool. And I'd like to see that across the city, um, you know, for all of our pools. I don't want to be burdened with the loss of water and disrepair in all these pools. As we know, um, Corey and Deb and myself and Rev are on the task force for the parks tax, and I can't see any better way to start where to put this money. Um, in in the first, I think first and foremost, we need a comprehensive plan, you know, and it's going to cost money, an assessment of every single pool. Um, more pool, we can consider that being the first one. My my thought is, I mean, until we get the assessment, we don't know for sure, but my thought is every pool is going to need major renovations and major, you know, investment. And, you know, I personally will be making that argument on the task force as to, first, let's make sure we get the assessment, hire somebody to assess all these pools. Um, secondly, you know, let's start fixing them. Let's start replacing them. And I see, you know, Direct Director Chapman on online there. I don't know if Director Hornstein's on or not, but um, but yeah, so I love what you're doing for this year. Let's open what pools we can so people can swim. But ultimately, we need a plan for every pool. I don't even know how many pools we have. Does anybody know?
Twenty-eight, I think you've correct.
Councilmember? Uh, good morning, everyone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right, Council President. Uh, Ross Chapman, Director of Parks and Recreation. Uh, there are eighteen outdoor swimming pools, uh, Councilman, and there's the one indoor, the Alver Bath House, which soon will be going through some extensive renovation too, year or two. Uh, and we have eight spray parks, twenty-six outdoor uh water assets.
Right. And, you know, the spray parks, I love. We have one in Beachview that replaced a pool that they shut down some time ago. Um, they don't seem to be used by adults. I would say, you know, it's for kids. But really, the adults use the pools, I think, as much as the kids in my district. Um, for whatever reason, uh, you know, I know adults bring their children there, but they don't seem to get the refreshment out of them that they do a swimming pool. So so I love the spray parks, but you're saying we have eighteen pools, and more pool is a pretty big pool, um, pretty, you know, vast amount of repairs that are going on there, um, and it's costing a million dollars roughly. Um, so you're looking at eighteen million dollars, and we can have brand new pools everywhere, and they'll all be paying for themselves within four or five years with the amount of water they're losing. I believe, I'm not certain of this, but I believe every one of our pools are losing a vast amount of water on a monthly basis. We're filling them um endlessly. Is that correct?
Try to capture water, the water bill, the expense. Um, we won't, the kind of the problem is, um, aside from what we've been talking about for the last four weeks regarding staffing and opening more pools, is we won't have a water bill calculation for the pools that are not open because they're not open. There's no water. So there might, um, you know, Chris is pretty smart. Uh, I think there can be some approximations of total water expense perhaps. But I think until we get a better understanding of which pools leak the worst, how much water is actually replenished daily, weekly, et cetera, I think we're really not gonna know what that number is. So to your point about deferred maintenance and um the work that's necessary, yes, there's quite a few pools that need a similar investment that uh that's being um delivered to more uh right now. But I don't really have a good sense of uh of which pools might be most expensive or those pools that might be a little less expensive that are kind of the low hanging fruit to continue to try to operate them next summer and beyond with proper staffing levels and um wages and all the rest. Uh, but we do need to, I think, think through this carefully and determine what the what that total bill could be. Maybe aside from the water bill, there's a calculation of capital investment, and then we we talk, you tag on that uh operating cost, that is water. Um, you know, the spray parks, the way they're designed, that water goes to waste. That water does not, it is not recycled. So there's that consideration as well. So, yeah, it's 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 probably a big number.
Yep. And and water aside, you know, the amenities, I I see a lot of the pools throughout the city. I just think they, I think it's a great, great investment for not only us, for future generations. Um, you know, it's infrastructure, really, you know, and it will last for generations if we do what we're doing at more, more. Um, you know, it's infrastructure, really, you know, and it will last for generations if we do what we're doing at Moore, Moore Pool. And as much as the water loss and, you know, it paying for itself over a number of years, at least in the Moore situation. You know, the amenities, I think we should have first class pools and I wouldn't be saying this if we didn't have the newfound parks tax coming in. So for me, you know, there's no better way. I know we're trying to figure out how to spend the parks tax, but there's no better way, no better starting point for me than to hire somebody to assess our pools. So we know what we're looking at in the big project. So and no matter the cost, no matter the repairs, it's something I believe the city has to invest in. Um, I thought it was tragic how we shut down a number of pools, you know, years ago. Um, so, okay, uh, that's it for me. Um, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? If not, Councilwoman Gross, or are you making a motion to hold the bill or?
Um, I will do that just so that we, you know, even that was, it'll be like a weekly update, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
So I'll just hold it one more week. Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. Uh, Bill fifteen sixty-two is next.
Bill sixteen fifty-two, resolution appropriating federal American Rescue Plan funding for a four-year period from January first, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, as recommended by the mayor and the Pittsburgh Recovery Task Force at a cost not to exceed the amount received from the United States Department of Treasury.
Just one of clarity, Madam Clerk, I apologize. I may, I may be mixed up. On my agenda, I have Bill fifteen sixty-two next.
Yes.
Which is the Business Improvement District for the PDP.
All right. I mean, I may not have the most updated agenda than we had an updated.
You want me to read it?
Yeah, go ahead and read it while I'm looking for it.
Bill number fifteen sixty-two, resolution providing for the continued designation of a downtown Pittsburgh Business Improvement District for the area shown on Exhibit A at the behest of the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership. A coalition of property owners, business leaders, retailers, civic organizations, and residents. Uh, preparing this hell June twenty-ninth.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
In discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill sixteen thirty-four.
Bill sixteen thirty-four, resolution authorizing the issue of a warrant in favor of Michael A. Douglas in settlement in the amount of two thousand one hundred, two thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-eight cents in settlement of a claim for damage to part vehicle and other property damage from a city soft truck on January twenty-first of twenty twenty.
Motion to approve.
Second.
In discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. We need a motion to approve the invoices.
Several. Second.
In discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Now I need a motion to approve the P cards.
Motion to approve. Okay.
In discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Councilman O'Connor. First new paper is Bill sixteen thirty-five.
Bill sixteen thirty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of public safety on behalf of the city to enter into a police traffic services grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Division of Highway Safety for the purpose of receiving funds in the amount of three hundred and eighty thousand, fifty-seven dollars and ten cent that will be used for enforcement of drunk and impaired driving as well as related outreach activities.
Motion to approve. Second.
In discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen thirty-six.
Bill sixteen thirty-six, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city into a grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Auto Theft Prevention Authority for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount of two hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars that will be used to establish, coordinate, and fund activities to prevent combat and reduce auto theft.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'm sitting there.
Okay.
Discussion. Sorry, Corey, I jumped in because I couldn't get my question in on the last.
Oh, you're, you're good.
I totally apologize, but I was slow. Last time. I wanted to make sure.
All good.
The chairs. This time. Um, if someone could just say a little bit about what the grant is for. Um, uh, it would be nice to just have it on the record. And similarly, if that person can answer the question for the the, what the grant says a general topic, you know, you, for the last bill is to enforce drunken and impaired driving. But I, you know, is it equipment? Is it, and you know, sometimes those are just like public relations campaigns. You could say a little bit what the grants are for, for sixteen thirty-five and sixteen thirty-six would be helpful. Mr. Donnelly still here? Is Mr. Donnelly able to speak to these bills?
See his name.
I mean, I, I believe the first.
But I, like I said, it was too slow on the last bill and then he seems like he's logged off.
Um, so, so the first one I think is the, the, that's the one we usually do and it always comes up around Fourth of July each year. Um, with additional DUI checkpoints and things like that.
Okay, so like paid for the staffing or something?
Yeah, and, and I think we also partnership with state troopers in certain areas too, on, on highways for those DUI checkpoints. Um, so I know that's what, that, that's the usual DUI one that we get every year.
Yeah. Can I jump in there? All right.
Please.
Council, hi, good morning, Councilwoman. We do, we do get these each year and they are largely operational in nature uh, for public service campaigns and for DUI checkpoints. And the councilman is correct, they generally tend to come in around this Fourth of July holiday and uh, for, you know, the summer uptick, if you will.
Thank you. Does anyone know how the sixteen with the auto theft works?
I believe those are larger educational campaigns as well, too. Um, I had the pleasure of meeting Officer Luffy for the very first time about seventeen years ago or something on a campaign like this to uh, prevent uh, vehicle theft and auto break-in and um, um, and I believe these kinds of dollars were used to do that kind of work as well, too. Largely educational campaigns and uh, operational expenses.
I know that our block watch meetings, our officers always, always, always remind us to lock the doors of our cars and hide any valuables and not leave anything in our cars on the street. That is, it occupies a good deal of their time. So, um, thank you. That's all I needed. I just wanted to get some information. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill, uh, Bill is recommended. That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. Uh, first new papers, Bill sixteen thirty-seven.
Bill sixteen thirty-seven, resolution that the mayor and director of city planning on behalf of the city are hereby authorized to enter into a professional services agreement for a public art project coordinator with KC Droge Cultural Production LLC to administer, coordinate, and document the city's twenty twenty-one Art in Parks program at a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Uh, motion to approve, brief discussion?
Second.
I wanted to just ask, uh, Director Dash, just give a, just a brief overview. Um, uh, for one thing, I'm excited to see a a North Sider born and raised on the North Side, um, become the project coordinator for this. I just wanted to highlight it. Director.
So, uh, so what the, the department is asking for is uh, to bring Casey on as a project coordinator. Um, her role be uh, supplementing the work that our public art and civic design division is doing uh, relative to documenting all of the new artwork that's being created in our five regional parks uh, with the Arts and Parks Program. And um, and coordinating the artists themselves uh, with each other. So we've, we've gone through and selected artists uh, that, that we were, you know, from the five hundred thousand dollar um, Rad Grant that we received uh, to, to do the art in our regional parks. And like I said, Casey's job will be coordination uh, of the artists, uh, documentation of the work that goes on through this process. Um, and, you know, and, you know, we chose this through a competitive process, um, you know, where, you know, Casey has experience managing these types of projects.
Oh, great. So this is, this is connected to the, this is essentially the project manager for the, those, all, all the different installations in the Rad Parks.
Yeah, so it will be, I mean, you know, our, our staff, our public art and civic design staff will, will be a part of that as well. Um, but Casey will be supplementing them and doing a lot of the documentation for, you know, you have for, for the project uh, and assisting in coordination of the artists.
Okay. It's just good to see a, a North Sider and a Schenley graduate uh, continuing to do great things. So thanks.
Yep. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen thirty-eight?
Bill sixteen thirty-eight, resolution for the amending resolution number six forty-seven entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Twenty-One Capital Budget and the Twenty Twenty-One CDBG and the Twenty Twenty-One through Twenty Twenty-Six Capital Improvement Program by increasing various line items funded by the Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, Housing Opportunities for Persons with Age and Home Investment Partnership Program.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any further? Bill is recommended. That moves us to Urban Recreation Committee chaired by Councilman Burgess. One deferred paper, Bill fifteen eighty-six.
Bill fifteen eighty-six, ordinance amended and supplemented in the city code at title for public places and property. Article eleven, Parks and Playground, Chapter four seventy-seven. Permits in fee section four seventy-seven oh one, park permit procedures, section four seventy-seven oh two. Fees for swimming pools, golf course, skating rinks, and other recreational facilities. So as to give priority to city residents for park facilities rentals.
Can I make, Reverend, can I make a motion to hold for one week?
He's on mute.
Oh, is he? Okay, I was wondering. I knew he was on there.
Reverend.
Reverend, you're on mute.
I'm always talking. I'm sorry. Motion.
And I'm always trying to mute you.
And then my wife. Motion for one week.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. First new papers, Bill sixteen.
Bill sixteen twenty-nine, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official school facilities plan for the Allegheny Center Alliance Church, seven forty-five Union Place.
Question to approve?
Second.
In discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen thirty.
Bill sixteen thirty, resolution amending resolution number eight nineteen, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning incorporation with the director of the Department of Public Works to accept funds from an Allegheny Regional Asset District in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars to fund public art projects in Emerald View Park, Frick Park, Highland Park, River, River View Park, and Schenley Park to restate the recitals and further describe the use of funds.
Question to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen thirty-one.
Bill sixteen thirty-one, resolution authorizing the U R A to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interest if any, and in, into the following publicly owned properties in the fifth ward of the city designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County located at twenty-three thirty-three and twenty-three thirty-one Center Avenue, respectively, Council District Six.
Question to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen thirty-two?
Bill sixteen thirty-two, resolution approving the execution of a contract for disposition by seller plan between the U R A and TomTom Twenty Four Development LLC or a related entity for the sale of property located at lots one thirteen, one thirteen A, one thirteen B, and one thirteen C located at, and surrounding twenty-one seventy-eight Center Avenue in the fifth ward, Council District Number Six.
Question to approve?
Second.
In discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. And our last bill is Bill sixteen thirty-three.
Bill sixteen thirty-three, resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Finance to enter into a right of entry agreement with the U R A and city stores associates to allow the removal of a tree located on designated city property.
Question to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. We do have a number of meeting announcements um, this afternoon at one thirty, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill twenty-two thousand twenty-one dash eleven thirty-five, a resolution declaring the state of an educational emergency in the city of Pittsburgh. To register for this public hearing, please fill out the sign up form on the council meeting webpage by eleven thirty, eleven thirty AM today. You may also register right on four one two, two five five, two one three eight. Council will meet next Tuesday and Wednesday, July sixth and seventh at ten AM for our regular and standing committee meetings respectively. To register for next week's council meetings, please fill out the sign up form on the council meeting webpage by nine AM Tuesday and Wednesday. You may also register right on four one two, two five five, two one three eight. Also next week, council will hold two cable cast post agendas as follows. Tuesday, July sixth at one thirty PM on the American Rescue Plan funding as relates to Bill sixteen fifty-two. And then Wednesday, July seventh at one thirty PM with the Board of Education, the superintendent and the president of the Pittsburgh Federation of Teachers on current and future plans and programs to increase academic achievement as relates to Bill eleven thirty-five. Also, city residents and stakeholders are invited to share their input in the city's two thousand twenty-two operating budget by taking a survey either online at www dot engage dot Pittsburgh PA dot gov backslash two thousand twenty-two budgets or by calling three one one. The two thousand twenty-two operating budget survey is open through July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Are there any announcements from members?
Councilman?
President Smith?
Thank you. I just want to um, ask Reverend Burgess, are you chairing the meeting today or, or Councilman LaBelle? The hearing?
I don't know.
Um, okay.
I'll talk to you offline.
Okay, I just wanted, I, I don't know if I need to be there to cheer, that's all. And then, um, I want to say that we did schedule the uh, post-agendas Councilman LaBelle just mentioned for the um, the, the funding, the American Rescue Plan uh, funding. And uh, we are scheduling two uh, public hearings and I hope council members are, are good with that, but uh, I know that uh, Councilwoman Strasburg is always asking for us to find new ways to, to engage people to even, including on the weekend. So um, I did think of you when I scheduled it in, in the public, of course, um, trying to give people a new way to, to communicate with council. And if that's, uh, if we seem like we want to have a third one, I'm willing to have that too, maybe out in the community somewhere in person, uh, if members want to do that. Um, so at least give people several opportunities to talk uh, about what they think that we should be using this funding for. And of course, in the end, you know, council will vote, but I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity to hear from the public. And so uh, those dates we gave are tentative until uh, Madam Clerk uh, confirms that we are able to do it those days with IMP and, and others. So I just want to make sure people know that I gave the only date that's confirmed in, in terms of that funding is the public, the post-agenda, which is on the sixth. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and have a happy Fourth of July, everyone. Be safe.
Anything else from members? If not, the motion. If not, the motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.